Okay, good evening. We are going to call the village board meeting. Are you ready?
Yes.
For Tuesday, April 26, 2022, to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bishke.
Present.
Trustee Madin.
Present.
Trustee Dunham.
Present.
Trustee Sullivan.
Present.
Trustee Clare.
Present.
Trustee Kozak.
Here.
President.
Present. And I'd like to ask you if you have any of these fancy electronic devices that make noise, if you would please turn them off. We appreciate that. Pledge of allegiance, trustee Dunham, would you mind?
Oh, sure. Please rise.
I plead the allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you very much. Next item is the approval of minutes for April 12, 2022. Questions, comments? Motion approved.
Second.
The motion and a second to approve the minutes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next item is the approval of the April 12, 2022, public hearing minutes. Any questions, comments, or no's?
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second to approve. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Next item, approval expenditures for the amount of $2,885,885. Sorry. $2,885,885 and 23 cents.
Moved approved expenditures as presented.
Second.
Thank you. It's a motion and a second to approve as presented. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bishke.
Aye.
Trustee Madin.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Clare.
Aye.
Trustee Kozak.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have some presentations, and our first one is retirement presentation for 34 years. Why don't you just make it 35, you know, 34. 34 years to John Schneider, Fire Battalion Chief. So. Let me see here. So you're gonna have to hang for a minute while I read this, if you don't mind. So, "In grateful appreciation to John, Fire Battalion Chief, in recognition of your 34 years of dedicated service to the village of Schaumburg, 1988 to 2022. Best wishes in your retirement from village president, village board, village clerk, and staff of the village of Schaumburg." I first came out of board in 2008, so wow.
I'm your senior now.
Yeah. Okay. Well, let's give you this here. We'll do a little picture taking. Any special plans?
I'm actually retiring and becoming the fire chief.
Oh, that's right. You were telling me that. Yeah. So how exciting. Okay.
Thank you. I served on the village.
You can always leave that one whenever you want, then, right? So, very good. No taking up golf or anything like that?
No, golf takes too long.
Yeah, well, that's what I did when I retired. Decided I would try golf, so. All right, well, again. Okay, Michael, you're up. This is a presentation of the American Public Works Association's Excellence in Snow and Ice Control Award by Michael Hall, Director of Engineering and Public Works. We had a pretty good winner this year.
We did.
Things got done great, but we were fortunate we didn't get quite as much snow. Any idea?
We'll be actually presenting that report here at EPW next month, so.
I'll be looking forward to that.
Today, we're here to announce and present to you, we were one of five agencies nationally to receive the Excellence in Snow and Ice Award from the American Public Works Association, APWA, for this year. The award was established to promote excellence in the management and administrative administration of public works, snow and ice operations, while minimizing environmental impacts. Categories evaluated for the award included material handling, equipment, training, community outreach, technical, and environmental. Schaumburg's engineering and public works department is responsible for providing snow and ice operations for over 200 lane miles or sign-in lane miles of roadway, 400 cul-de-sacs, a number of, you know, parking lots and airports, commuter lot. So in addition to the state-of-the-art equipment and resource management tools that we have, we employ an interactive snow map. It's called Snowstat. We worked with that application in tandem with IT. I'd like to thank Peter and his department for that as well. And that provides near-real-time updates on snow removal operations on village-maintained streets during snow and ice operations. I'm excited to accept this award. Actually, John Williams, the street and signs superintendent, or, sorry, foreman, accepted this award in Pittsburgh a couple of weekends ago, attended the Snow and Ice Conference. So this award is very important to us as a department. It really identifies the achievements of the department as a whole, including all the frontline maintenance workers, you know, operators, the foreman group that manage the operations, the superintendents, and to you all for supporting that effort. So, thank you very much. Appreciate your support. And here's the award.
Ah, okay. The Excellence in Snow and Ice Control Awards presented by the village of Schaumburg, April 2022. Very good. Wow, it's pretty nice, too. Okay. So can I let you, you're gonna hang on to it? You've got a spot for it?
Absolutely.
Okay, great. Okay, Michael. All right. And thank you to everyone there, everyone in public works that helps keep our streets clean, the snow and the ice, and safe for the public to travel on it. So, thank you very much. All right, we will move on. Next item, liquor license request. We have no requests this evening. Consent agenda. The consent agenda will be read in its entirety, voted on as one motion to approve. If you'd wish to discuss any item further, please indicate that when the item is read by the village clerk, so that it can be removed from the consent agenda and discussed further under committee reports. Otherwise, all items will be approved as presented on the consent agenda in one motion to approve. Clerk, please read the consent agenda.
Number one, liquor licenses. The motion would be to approve the request from Reverend Jeremy Thomas of Church of the Holy Spirit for five Class D one-day liquor licenses for the family fest on June 22, 2022, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM, June 23, 2022, from 6:00 PM until 10:00 PM, June 24, 2022, from 6:00 PM until 11:00 PM, June 25, 2022, from 4:00 PM until 11:00 PM, June 26, 2022, from 1:00 PM until 10:00 PM at the grounds of Church of the Holy Spirit, 1451 West Bodie Road, Wade's Heights. Two, proclamations, administrative, professional day, April 27, 2022. B, Professional Municipal Clerks Week, May 1 to 7, 2022. Three, Engineering and Public Works Committee. A, the motion would be to approve the final balancing change order number two for Kimberly Drive and Quinton Road Water Main Project with Martum Construction, Inc. of Elgin, Illinois, in the amount of $69,044.25, and approve the required resolution. B, the motion would be to award a bid for the 2022 Street Improvement Program Contract Number Two with Arrow Road Construction Company of Mount Prospect, Illinois, in the amount of $6,847,426.35. Four, finance, legal, administrative, and general government. A, the motion would be to approve the Finance Department monthly report for March 2022. B, the motion would be to extend the agreement with Tom Thompson Weir LLC for Legislative Consulting Services for the year 2022-23. C, the motion would be to adopt an ordinance amending various sections of Title VII of the Schaumburg Municipal Code to incorporate process revisions and socially appropriate and contemporary language. D, the motion would be to approve a resolution approving the adjusted pay grades effective May 1, 2022. E, the motion would be to waive competitive bidding and approve the sole source subscription renewal for Microsoft O365 licensing for Liftoff LLC of Crofton, Maryland, in the amount of $99,000. F, the motion would be to approve continuation of technical staffing services with Sierra ITS of Park Ridge, Illinois, and approve issuance of a pay-down purchase order in the amount of $232,219. G, the motion would be to approve waiving the competitive bidding process and approve a purchase order for network support staffing services from Sentinel Solutions LLC of Aurora, Illinois, in the amount not to exceed $156,000. H, the motion would be to approve a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement with Comcast of Schaumburg, Illinois, for metro E internet connections and PRI services, and approve annual payments of $145,800 for three years, subject to approval fiscal year budget allocations. I, the motion would be to approve a resolution authorizing the village manager to execute a two-year agreement for phone services under the completed link direct program between AT&amp;T of Lisle, Illinois, and the village of Schaumburg, and approve first and second year payments, subject to approved fiscal year budget allocations. J, the motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute an agreement with Robindale of Narbeth, PA, in the amount of $100,000 for the marketing of 90 North Schaumburg. K, the motion would be to authorize a resolution approving and authorizing a 6B classification for 140 East State Parkway, Schaumburg, Illinois, Black Star Distributors. Five, committee of the whole. The motion would be to adopt an ordinance, adopting an annual budget for the fiscal year commencing May 1, 2022, and ending April 30, 2023, in lieu of passage of an appropriations ordinance. Six, Planning, Building, and Development Committee. The motion would be to recommend the village, the village board direct staff to draft code language pertaining to license requirements for auto repair businesses. B, the motion would be to approve a one-year extension for building inspection and plan review services with TPI Building Code Consultants, Inc. of Elgin, Illinois, for the period of May 1, 2022 through April 30, 2023, in an amount not to exceed the approved for the year 2022-23 budget. Seven, Zoning Board of Appeals. The motion would be to approve a site plan amendment, facade and parking lot modifications, special use for a drive-through sign variations, and Woodfield Regional Center Design Review for Fudweckers Redevelopment, 436 East Gulf Road. B, the motion would be to approve an amendment to municipal code Title XV, Chapter 154 zoning pertaining to outdoor dining. Eight, Project Review Group. The motion would be to approve a site plan amendment, facade modifications, and Woodfield Regional Design Center Review for Superior Ambulance, 2207 Hammond Drive. Nine, traffic agreements. The motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute the traffic agreement by and between the village of Schaumburg and Galvin HQ LLC located at 2021 Parkside Drive, Schaumburg, Illinois, 60173. B, the motion would be to authorize the village manager to execute the traffic agreement by and between the village of Schaumburg and Thor, 2011 Tower Road LLC located at 2011 Tower Road, Schaumburg, Illinois, 60173. Ten, resolutions. The motion would be to adopt as resolution number R22-045, authorizing the village manager and village clerk to execute a balancing change order for the Kimberly Drive and Quinton Road Water Main Project with Martum Construction, Inc. B, the motion would be to adopt as resolution number R22-046, setting forth the official pay plan for employees of the village of Schaumburg for the fiscal year 2022-2023. C, the motion would be to adopt as resolution number 22-047, authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement between the village of Schaumburg and Comcast for metro E entertainment connection and PRI services, 2022-2024. D, the motion would be to adopt as resolution number R22-048, authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement between the village of Schaumburg and AT&amp;T for phone line services, 2022-2023. E, the motion would be to adopt as resolution number R22-049, approving and authorizing a 6B classification for 140 East Parkway, Schaumburg, Illinois, Black Star Distributors, Inc. F, the motion would be to adopt as resolution number R22-050, authorizing the village manager to execute an agreement between the village of Schaumburg and Robindale for marketing of 90 North Schaumburg. Eleven, ordinances. The motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 22-031, granting a site plan amendment, facade and parking lot modifications, special use for a drive-through sign variations, and Woodfield Regional Center Design Review for Fudweckers Redevelopment, 436 East Gulf Road. B, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 22-032, amending Title XV, Chapter 154 zoning of the municipal code pertaining to outdoor dining. C, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 22-033, granting a site plan amendment, facade modifications, and Woodfield Regional Center Design Review for Superior Ambulance, 2207 Hammond Drive. D, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 22-034, adopting an annual budget for the village of Schaumburg for the fiscal year commencing May 1, 2022, and ending April 30, 2023, in lieu of passage of an appropriations ordinance. E, the motion would be to waive first reading and adopt as ordinance number 22-035, amending various sections of Title VII of the Schaumburg Municipal Code to incorporate process revisions and socially appropriate and contemporary language. This concludes the consent agenda.
Look for a motion to approve. The consent agenda has been read.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Bishke.
Aye.
Trustee Madin.
Aye.
Trustee Dunham.
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan.
Aye.
Trustee Clare.
Aye.
Trustee Kozak.
Aye.
Six ayes, no nays. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Committee reports. We have none for this evening. Comments from the audience? Anyone wishing to address the village board for items pertinent towards the village of Schaumburg, please come forward. Okay. Oh, yes, come forward, please. Need your name and address for the record. There is a sign-in sheet there, too, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. My name is Gerald, or Jerry, Squares. I live at 1058 Mohegan Lane in Schaumburg. And I'm here just looking for some information, because we, my wife and I, represent the Homeowners' Association, Weatherfield South, which is located right near, and I'm sure you all know where the village tavern is at, at Salem and Cranbrook. And we've got a couple of issues, and I don't know how to address them or how to take care of them. Number one, we have these utility posts from AT&amp;T that are falling down all over the place in our village, I mean, in our homeowners association. And it looks like, if you'll excuse the expression, it looks like hell. I have got one that fell against one of our fences. We put a fence in front of our clubhouse to hide some of the utility boxes, to give it curb appeal. in front of our clubhouse to hide some of the utility boxes, to give it curb appeal. And the telephone utility box, the one that's about that square and about that high, fell up against our fence. I've got pictures, if you guys want to see them. And I know if I call AT&amp;T, number one, I don't know who to call. Well, I tried to call the repair service, and they said, oh, do you want to upgrade your service? No, I just, I want somebody to come out and repair it. And I figure that Schaumburg has more influence with AT&amp;T than I would have. So I need some direction. Maybe you guys can help us out. Another thing is, one of the cable companies is stretching a cable across Salem and Cranbrook. It's going up a, it's going up a pine tree into another tree, across Salem, and down and across a piece of land going to another utility box. I'm assuming it's cable. And it's been like that for over a month. And I don't think that cables should be running across Salem like that. Some people I talked to said, well, the utility company will eventually bury the cable. I says, well, how long is it going to take? Well, they'll get it done eventually. But I don't know that. And it does pose a hazard to people walking their dogs in the area, because that cable is running on the grass. And when you walk your dog, sometimes they go off into the grass, and you're, you know, if you're with a leash and you're watching your dog, or if it's late at night, you might trip over that cable. So that's another concern. And the other concern is, what can be done about renters that are of questionable character? At one point in time, this might have been 10, 15 years ago, maybe 15 years ago or so, we had, in our complex, some graffiti. And the people that were renting the house, I guess, had some issues with, or running with the police. And eventually, the, from what I understand, I may be wrong, and the village forced them to evict their tenants because they were of questionable character. So I'm just looking for direction. That's all.
Okay. So you kind of gave us, like, three things, if I got this correctly.
Yes.
Clayton here is from the village manager's office.
Okay.
And what I'm going to ask you to do is, after the meeting, we'll be done here shortly, after the meeting, Clayton will get with you and talk to you at least about two of them. The first two, which is the telephone poles and the cabling, Clayton will either, he'll address that or get it addressed, or he'll have someone else get it addressed. But he'll get you a business card and maybe the pictures and everything else. You two can work together on that. The third issue with the question of tenant, probably best handled by the police chief. Is that appropriate? Okay. So we can work that through the police chief, so he'll see you after the meeting also, and you can talk to him. We do have guidelines that we give out to people for landlords that help them ensure that they get good tenants that don't have problems and cause problems for neighborhoods. So maybe the landlord there just is unaware of that, and we can help with some of that, too. So both of these gentlemen will help you out. Okay?
Okay.
Okay, sure.
Where do I sign in?
Probably somewhere on page right there.
Yeah, right here. Right here.
Okay.
Well, can I take this over there and sign?
Sure.
Because anyone's keeping anybody else.
Yep. Oh, that's fine. Anyone, I don't think there's anyone else. Is there anyone else? Okay. You got it?
It's nice to be coordinated.
Okay, there you go.
Thank you.
Sure.
Don't worry.
Okay. No one else? Move on. Counsel report?
No report.
Okay. President's report? I have none this evening. Managers' report?
No report.
New business? We have no new business to come before us. Unfinished business? None there either. Trustee comments and mentions? Yes, trustee Dunham.
I was struck driving over here this evening, coming west on Meacham Road. What a fine job that Public Works and our contractors have done. I said Meacham, I meant Schaumburg Road. What a fine job they've done on the median between Meacham and Plum especially. And it looks like that work carries on to the west. So, Mike, your guys have done just a beautiful, beautiful job on that, on those medians. And just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Pass one, landscape. Thank you.
Good point, George. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Look for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.